At five thirty P M. Looking to advise that due to the public health emergency caused by the COVID nineteen virus, the following requirements will be enforced by the city council. At the city council meeting, anyone entering the building must wear a mask and a right of protection check. Anyone with a temperature of over ninety-nine degrees Fahrenheit will be denied entry. A maximum of eight citizens will be allowed in this conference chamber at one time, and they will sit in a designated seats committee. Each person must decide before any entertainment which agenda item to comment on. If they are not seated at entertainment, when the agenda item is heard, they will be notified by an officer to enter the conference chamber to address that agenda item. Agenda of all orders, please silence all cell phones and electronic devices. Let's talk about the things today.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hello, Councilman.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Lawrence?
Here.
Mr. Rivera?
Here.
Mr. Wade?
Here.
Mr. President?
Thank you. Agenda of great privilege minutes on regular meeting of March the other twenty twenty.
Move.
Second.
I motion my Councilman Brown, second my Councilman Lawrence. Any objections? Here and now. Agenda four, public comments. Comments from the public go out in accordance with Louisiana statute and the city of Fort Allen's citizens in chapter two, article two, section two, three, thirty-four, specifically limited to agenda item to be considered during the meetings. Three minutes per person and fifteen minutes pro topic. Agenda five, considering adoption of the resolution informing the Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality of the actions taken by the city of Fort Allen in regards to the two thousand and eighteen M W P P report for its annual duty to self-evaluate the wastewater treatment plant under permit number L A zero zero two zero five four one, Fort Allen wastewater treatment facility. Mr. Tony, I call the P C, P C.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. This is an annual, basically, self-evaluation. I think y'all have a copy of it in your packet. It's item number five. Essentially, what you do is you go through the, basically, how the wastewater plant did from a performance standpoint, and also what kind of shape it's in, and also if you've gotten any violations. It's actually one, it's an interesting thing in that you score different sections, and you actually want the score to be as low as possible, like a zero score or a one score is good. Unfortunately, of course, our score is significantly higher than that. A few things, and all you're doing tonight is accepting, you know, that you're creating, you know, have possession of this and have the opportunity to look at it, and I'll certainly answer any questions. You know, one of the things it does show is, obviously, our plant is old, and we have some infrastructure at the plant that is, obviously, keeping it from performing as well as even an old facility can. And certainly, I know there's a big push to move the treatment plant, but I guess I would just urge everyone, if we could spend some money to just band-aid it till y'all find a site and find funding, I think that would be prudent, but, yeah. Obviously, I understand that everything has to do with cost and location. Any questions?
I, Mr. Brown, according to the report, there did periodize that the city needs to address several issues at the back of the report within due time, and I need to go advise the council that each one of these observations that they observed needs to address at the board.
And I'll, I'll say, you know, Mayor and Council, quite a few of these are going to require repair or replacement of some materials. Now, sometimes you can buy some time and say, look, we're looking for funding to relocate the plant. It's, quite frankly, a decision by EPA and D E Q that's not something you have control over. We can certainly reply and say, we're looking at them, but at some point, obviously, you know, you're going to pay the money. Typically, how it works with wastewater treatment plants is, if you have violations for long enough, or if they're serious enough violations, you'll get what they call an administrative order that basically lists the detailed violations and says, hey, you have X amount of time to make this happen, or you get fined. I want to say it's twenty-one thousand dollars a day. But they, obviously, they don't want to fine you twenty-one thousand dollars a day, they want you to fix it.
Mayor, I think we should move on that because we've been talking about that wastewater treatment plant too long. We need to get going on whatever we have to do to get the thing right.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. And that's what we're in the process of doing.
Thank you.
And I have our wastewater chief supervisor, Ryan, y'all, all that, telling you about the process that's going on, and what's still down, if there's anything there.
Tom, Tom, before you leave, any of these parts, like we said, I think we're band-aided a little bit, but that's just my opinion, but the, on parts, and I'm not familiar with these parts, I would just like to make sure that if, when we're purchasing any of these things, that some of it may be transferable to a new plant, that we don't duplicate that money.
And to the maximum extent, I promise we will, but there's some instances where you just can't. It just fits in the thing. But something like a front-end screen or a dewatering unit, you can get those where they're, you know, portable.
Yeah.
And typically, they're made out of stainless steel, so even if it's three or four years old, it's still good to go.
Okay. Hey, what about that grit pit? You tell them?
That's another unit you could put in there as a stainless unit and relocate it to another place. Mayor, while I was up, and I'm just taking advantage, because I know y'all don't have any means, you want me to give y'all an update on a couple of jobs that are going on in the city?
Yes, sir.
The West Side Village Pump Station was supposed to start up today. They had some electrical issues. It'll probably start up next week. That's our hope, and if y'all recall, that's the one that's going to relieve some of the hydraulic problems back in there that's, you know, backing up people's houses. The road program, because of the COVID nineteen, that particular road contractor has, you know, did temporarily shut down their operations. They will be back at the beginning of May, I'm sorry, June. So, we expect them to go full bore in the beginning of June. And that's, any other questions, y'all? I appreciate it.
Okay, Mr. Lawrence, when you give us a day on. Do you have a question?
We need a moment. All right, so look, I'm moved.
Second.
Okay, Ron, still, you're the same eye?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we're planning along, you know, I've been working the last month or so. We're shorthanded, and so I haven't really pushed my people too hard. I didn't want to by calling and saying. So, there's a few things still need repair, like we mentioned that grit pit, but we haven't used that in eight years at least. Need some repairs to the affluent pumps, still need some repairs there, and a few other pumps, quite frankly, and to be honest, which a lot of this stuff is just aged, it's going to keep, you know, things are just breaking out one after another. I mean, the plant was built in nineteen sixty, and a lot of this stuff there has been since like these days, so. But, I mean, we're maintaining it, we're running right along.
We've been talking.
I mean, I need, I gotta spend money to get a lot of things fixed. You're right.
A number of years.
And every time you talk about it, something else has broken. So, I mean, that's just, just the way it's been.
We have purchased some.
Because you got ten lift stations off that we gotta maintain.
We purchased some land off of four fifteen at one time to transfer that.
Oh, you really need a new, really need a new plant, I mean, that's for sure. But, you know, next five, six years, you better plan on you than I, for sure. I don't know if y'all are looking at land or trying to get land and.
We had land, but it's somehow, when land left, it went out of existence. I'm sure there's grant money maybe, if anything.
Oh, yeah. Oh, so, man, right back to take. So, that's about it. I mean, we're maintaining it. Still need to spend money, though. I mean, it's, I don't think it's ever going to end with the age of that plant. And right now, we're first in short, and even want to get that first, and I could use a couple more people, though. I mean, if you want to, you know, get down, maintaining everything like it should be maintained, but that's about it.
And, and Greg, Mr. Trump, if, um, we have a clarified pit that still needs to be, that's still not in work.
Right, you gotta break that and get that back online. But, I mean, it ain't like the plant can't be, can't be rolling out. I mean, it has been for years.
But that's one of the violations, I think, that's the.
Yeah. Well, you listen to that grit pit, too, and I'll come to a point and tell you, I don't really need that grit pit. I mean, it's not even, not even necessary.
Okay, and also, we have a blower that's still out because of.
No, no, all the blowers are running.
Okay.
I mean, one of these a V F D on, that's about five thousand dollars right there. That was caused by lightning.
Uh-oh.
And, but, but we have it running. Only thing is, we gotta run it on a manual continuous. It can't, can't run on auto.
Yeah, and you can't run a continuous.
Yeah, it's a ten, yeah, right, right.
And also, we have the affluent pump this.
Yeah, that's what I said, the affluent pump, uh, I need to check it out, and we need, remember, we talked about the, the whole, the panel?
Panel.
Electrical panel? We got a quote for that, that was seventy thousand dollars. I don't know, I don't think we want to do that, but.
And the panel thing is the belt runner?
The belt runner? I, I plan on getting it running. I'm waiting for, we get back to normal, when I got all my guys there, because I can't, I can't mess with this thing and go out and clean sewer line, too, you know, I mean, there's not enough people, you know, two people every day. But, yeah, we're having, I already got that set up in this, uh, raw oven.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Chief, anybody downstairs?
Um, nothing at all. I can check it out when I can.
Radio. Anytime motion?
Move.
I have a motion by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Williams. Second, motion by Councilman Bill, second by Councilman Williams, and him, Jackson. Here and now.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Motion passed. Agenda six, presentation of proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty twenty-one for all funds of the city of Fort Allen and Fort Allen Rock.
The proposed budget, before you, in the very beginning of the first few pages, it highlights some of the summaries in each of the funds, and then what assumptions had to be made in order to create the document. The most important, the first most important page in it is page five, because that is the revenue and expense summary of the general fund, which is the biggest fund, with, of course, the biggest fund down at the twelve, and certainly the biggest fund where all of the police and roads and drainage and, and behalf of administration and community development and all of that comes out of the general fund. So, on page five, what you're looking at is the very far right column is what we're proposing the revenue to be, and in each specific grouping. And then, that first grouping, we are anticipating four point seven million in revenue. Please be advised, this is a guess, because I really don't know what's going to happen any more than anybody else does with the economy working like it should, sales taxes. We were fortunate last month, I was quite surprised, in fact, at the sales tax, but I don't think it's going to hold. And I have adjusted the sales tax, which is sixty percent or so of our total bu, general fund budget, down by ten percent, just to be safe, and I hope I'm wrong. In the right direction, I hope I'm wrong, because I hope we get a lot more cash and a lot more revenue than even I think we're going to get. The groupings are separated by taxes, licenses, intergovernmental charges for services, and fines, that's ticket money that we get when the police officers write tickets, apex royalty is that small check that we get for something going on on Oak Town, and I think we've been getting that for years. It fluctuates. If you look all the way to the left, it shows you the history on that same line of seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, what's actually happened in those accounts, so you can kind of see a comparison of where we've been, and some of them up and down. But the bottom line, and also investment earnings this year is a very good number, but I don't anticipate that to happen next year, because a lot of our money is in interest-bearing accounts that we get paid interest on, but that fluctuates when the market goes down. We do, however, have a very large C D that is paying pretty good money, because we locked it in a year or so ago, so, at least until that matures, that's steady money. So, that number is four point seven million. Then when you look at the expenditures right below that, this also is a summary, and the right column again is what I'm looking at, is, is by grouping of the general fund being the administration, six hundred fifty-eight thousand, that actually is half of that cost, because, that is half of the overall cost, because the other half goes in water and gas administration. The one forty-two is, is the estimated cost to have city court, one point eight million is the police department, another large number is one point five million, that's roads and drainage, sanitation is the garbage collection and animal control and all that, that's what those numbers are. The next one is community development, and three hundred seventy-eight thousand, a hundred and seventy-four thousand in fleet maintenance, and about eighteen thousand at the depot. The reason why the capital outlay on that page is not itemized is because it's in the numbers up above. It's in there already, so to put it again would be double counting. So, the bottom line is that the expense number is five point five million, and the revenue number is four point seven million, which means you start and hold a significant, by a significant amount, and you still have to pay two hundred forty thousand dollars of debt on this bill. So, you're dipping seriously into fund balance if the budget goes down like this. Now, all this other stuff in the box, all of that, to give you the details, the next several pages are the details, and each page has a title at the top of it, so you'll understand what you're seeing. The general fund revenues is a detailed breakdown of that page five summary. When you see three point six million, you can look here and find where the three point six million is broken down, so you'll know what's property taxes, what's property tax for the police department, what's property tax and franchise fees and all of those fees. The next grouping is our expenditures, and it's all separated by department. First administration, then city court, then police, and what they're spending it on, and what you can see is the history. If you look back to the left, what happened in twenty seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, and what we project to happen this year. That's what all those pages are. Then you get to the enterprise funds, which starts on page sixteen, and sixteen is where you get to water and gas, where we are projecting one point eight million in revenue, and then we start the expenditures, and that ends on page twenty, where we anticipate revenue of one point eight million and expenses of around two million, which looks like there's a loss there, but these enterprise funds are allowed to take depreciation, that the general fund is not allowed to do. And the depreciation on the water fund is about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars a year. So, that, yes, you got to replace some of those things, but it's not cash. It's not, it's paper, if you will. It's not money going out the door, yet. You will have to replace those things at some point, but in this picture, it's depreciation, not cash. And the water and gas fund does not have debt, thank God. So, the end result is that I anticipate still losing a little bit of money in the water and gas fund and having to dip into retained earnings, but not by a very large amount. And again, all of this is projections on a hope that we spend less than what I projected, and we receive at least what I projected. Those things we can't control. The revenue, we have less control over than spending, and that's why we need to keep control of it. The next group is the sewer fund, which starts on page twenty-one, and ends on the next page. I anticipate eight hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars in revenue and seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand in expenses, which on its face looks good. Oh, we're, we're good now, we got eighty-five thousand dollars to play with. Wrong. The sewer fund does not pay administration costs every month. They pay it at the end of the year to the water and gas fund for a percentage of all of the administration costs, which is anywhere from about ninety-five to a hundred thousand dollars. So, that also has to come out of that eighty-five thousand dollar number, and the sewer treatment plant has about a hundred and three thousand dollars in debt to D E Q on the revolving loan. So, it will be dipping, I suspect, not as significant as the general fund, but it will be dipping into those retained earnings as well. The next group is, on page twenty-three, is low-income housing. That really is just money in, money out. That's money, we only pay out what they tell us to pay out, and they give us money for that. That's a federal program, we're just a conduit to get it to our citizens, but we don't make a whole lot of money. They pay us for some administration costs to have our people do it, and stamps and all that kind of stuff, but just generally, we don't make money on it. The municipal complex debt service fund is the fund that we use to sort of, to pay our debt service, and is restricted for that, and what we do is we take the two hundred and forty thousand dollars out of the general fund cash, and I move it to this account so that I can then pay the debt service. The next big grouping is our payroll cost, which is the next three pages, and it is also categorized by administration, who's in administration, who the people are, if I have the names, they're there, if I don't have the names and it's a vacant position, then it's listed as vacant, because those positions are likely to be filled, and it totals over four million dollars in projected costs and benefits for employees. The next page, second to last page of this, of the whole thing, is the capital outlet expenditures for this year. You'll note that we don't have any expenditure costs for capital expenditures in administration, police department, protective inspection, in the water department or the gas department or the wastewater treatment plant. What we're projecting is roads and drainage, and it's listed, the cost and what it's for. In roads and drainage, four hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, which includes another step in the three hundred seventy-five thousand dollar road program, and sixty thousand dollars for storm drainage. And then, in community development, twelve thousand dollars for Christmas decorations, seventy-five thousand dollars for a fitness area at Centennial Park, and a hundred thousand dollars for a playground for the children at Khan Park. In fleet maintenance, a truck, F one fifty, for around twenty-four thousand, and a coach wheel balancer, assuming that's a piece of equipment that when we get new tires, which we often have to change, in particular in the police department because how many miles they roll on, that we can do that without having to ship it off to somebody else to pay the cost of that, and the costs will be then held inside. And seven thousand dollars in the sewer department for this B F D switch for the blower that Mr. Baldwin was speaking about earlier. A total of six hundred and eighty-two thousand, almost six hundred and eighty-three thousand. And the last thing, on the last page, I didn't get, and I'm sure the mayor is aware of what he wants in here, I just don't know what it is, and so I need to put something down. What I have in the community events number is twenty thousand dollars in promotion, ten thousand dollars in miscellaneous, five thousand dollars. I don't have a breakdown of what that is like I have done for you in the past, but I'm sure the mayor has in his mind what he's anticipating those things to cost and which items to be, I just don't know what they are. If I learn that between now and the final adoption, I certainly will put that together as well, but right now, in this introduction, I don't have it. So, I'll be glad to try to answer any questions, but y'all might have. You have thirty days, by the way. You're not going to be looking at this until, to prove it, if it's introduced tonight until our regular June meeting. The mayor has always been available. I think all of you have my cell phone number, even though I've been working from home, if you call, I certainly have taken calls. If you have any questions, you want to talk about any particular thing, if I know, I'll certainly tell you. If I don't know, I'll direct it to the mayor to get better and more information if I can't answer the question. But anything specific that you want to know about a particular area, if it looks like there's a spike or something, you might wonder why, why did that happen, or, you know, is there something weird about that? I don't have any problem trying to answer any of those questions, and like I said, I already have my cell phone number, so please, don't hesitate. I'll be glad to go over it with you in any, as much or as little detail as you choose, and, and we'll be looking to adopt it at the June meeting so that we can go forward to on first with our questions.
All right, thank you, Anthony Green. Any questions?
No questions. I'll tell y'all, just make a statement, this is a part about senior risk, but I will say to the council, we're not in a regular year. Anybody that thinks so, we've been in another climate, but some of this stuff looks far-fetched, and I think that we owe it to the citizens of this city to be proactive and not reactive to spending, and there's nobody in this room or in this city or in this state that can tell us where this economy is going. If you find that person, please let me know, I'm going to give them all my money to invest, but let's be very prudent. This year is very important on this, be very diligent, we have a month to go through this, and we need to take everything into consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Hope. Anybody else? Anything in motion? I move.
That was just the presentation. Get to number seven, seven is to introduce.
Okay. Agenda number seven, considering introduction of orders to provide for the draft in the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one for the city of Fort Allen Funds. I move.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Brown, second by Councilman Lawrence. Any objection? Here and now.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Motion, Harris. Do not make, consider authorizing the mayor to advertise an interview for the position of head payroll court, senior resource director. Due to retirement on April 30, 2020, Robin Abear, with 25 years of service to the citizens and employees of the city of Port Island. Ms. Abear is not here today, but we did recognize her with a plaque for the outstanding job she's been doing for the city of Port Island for the last 25 years. And if anyone here know her, she has done an excellent job. And at this time, we need to go ahead and advertise for that position. I got a motion by Councilman Brown, second by Councilman Williams. Any objections? Here or not?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Hovle?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Sweetie?
Yes.
Motion, Harris. Do not nine. Consider requesting an executive session to discuss the mayor's recommendation to Lance C. Joseph to fill the position of chief administrative officer pursuant to authority contained in the statute. Twenty-two, Collins, seventeen, eight, zero, one, no, eight, one.
Thank you, Brown. Council members, we have put this item on the agenda because a portion of the hiring process, of course, involves interviews where you discuss character, fitness, competence of your potential hires. That's one of the circumstances where the law allows you to go into executive session. However, the person can request that you not go into executive session to discuss those issues. Mr. Joseph has requested that this be in public. So this item is actually going to be moved. So if we can actually just go directly into the item number ten, and that will be the full discussion. Well, before we get to that, is Mr. Joseph here? Mr. Joseph, is that still your intention? You want this in public?
Sure.
Okay.
Again, I'm again. Consider consideration and action related to the mayor's recommendation to hire Lance Joseph as the new chief administrative officer. As I advise the council, a few council meetings in reference to the hiring of Mr. Joseph and why I feel that he's qualified for this position, I drew some key elements as to my determination for picking him. One was the fact that he was a prior employee with the city of Port Island for three years as I was serving my term. Secondly, he represented the city as an attorney. He's a practicing attorney. He was involved in many delegations with the city of Port Island. He has vast knowledge of the populations of the city, especially with the ENCODE software that the city operates under during the budgeting and utility bill. He's also familiar with several of the employees who work here with the city. Mr. Joseph is a life, a long resident. I mean, he grew up here in the city of Port Island. He now lives, I think, in Blacky. And one of the key elements I brought out was the fact that Mr. Joseph had prior, held a license of construction.
Yeah, I was a resident contractor.
Yes. And all those points I looked at in addition to the fact that he had prior experience as with the Louisiana Department of Revenue and taxation and a legal litigation law practice. He also was a public defender with the East Baton Rouge Law Session for years. And it was, you know, with these, accumulation of these findings and with the other candidates, I chose Mr. Lance to be the person to take this position that was left by Mr. John. And I'm going to tell the council, this is a very important position. I didn't realize it until after Mr. John left, all the work, and that he was assigned to do. He invited each one of the departments here with the city, the police department, wastewater treatment, roads and drainage, fleet management, administration. And he made sure that everything worked in order. And he did an excellent job. And now that he's been gone for a little over a month and a half, I had to assume a lot of those duties along with Ms. Rocha and Tennessee Department and also Mr. Dan. So it's been tough. And especially with the end that we've been going through, that made it a whole lot tougher. And at this time, I would like Mr. Joseph to also give, you know, us a brief presentation to the council as to why he should be deserving of this position.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's good to be back. As the mayor said, my name is Lance C. Joseph. I am a 1998 graduate of LSU with a degree in accounting. Completed law school at Southern University Law Center in 2002. Took the bar exam in July, so on and October. Been practicing ever since. I was appointed city attorney here by former mayor Deed Slaughter in 2013. However, I served the majority of my time under Mayor Lee, who took over in early 2014. I would like this position because I think I can help the city continue to grow and prosper. In conversation with the mayor, we've had some discussions about the importance of the position and some of the responsibilities involved. And I think I'm the best person for that job based on our discussions. My past experience, I've dealt with criminal defense. I've dealt with civil litigation, dealt with commercial litigation. I did sales tax litigation. I've done insurance litigation. I've dealt with people throughout my career. And I understand what it takes to get a job done, most importantly, when sometimes those, I guess, responsibilities create conflict among people. Bottom line is, is that this is a city government. We have a responsibility to provide services to our constituents. And that's not always going to be an easy thing to do in order to follow the law and do the right thing. But I find that if you do the right thing, everything else will take care of itself.
True.
So I think you know me. I represented you all well, I'd like to think. I left voluntarily. While there may have been some complaints, I don't think those complaints were relative to the law or any advice that I gave. I believe that, you know, I tried my best to represent you all effectively and give everyone all of the options that they had within the confines of the law. And that's what I intend to do, no matter what I'm doing, for as long as I do. I'm not going to compromise myself for anybody. I'm not going to compromise or jeopardize my law license for anybody. And while doing this job, I recognize that I won't be practicing law full-time anymore. It's still something that I may have to go back to at some point. So I ask for your vote. I ask for your support. Like I said before, I'm familiar with everyone here. I know a lot of the city employees. I know a lot of the issues that are pending. Based on our discussions with the mayor, I think we can put our minds together and come up with some solutions to address those various issues. And I think I'm qualified for the position. So based on that, I submit back to the mayor and I ask for your support. And I'm open to any questions also, if anyone has.
Where'd you receive training in ENCODE?
Well, the training I had in ENCODE was more or less subject to an internal investigation that took place while I was here. Because of the nature of that investigation, I don't believe it's appropriate to discuss in this forum because it involved personnel issue that occurred during that time. But in order to review that information and to determine what actually occurred and to isolate the information that was available to prove what had occurred, it involved some detailed conversations with ENCODE staff in order to be able to identify and discuss what actually happened in that incident.
Now, you said you won't be able to practice law full-time. You didn't say anything about part-time.
Well, what I mean is I'm not going to be practicing law as an employee of the city of Port Island. What I'm saying is that, full-time is the only thing I pretty much consider. I have no intention of continuing my law practice if appointed to this position.
And it seems like, if my memory serves me correct, when you left originally, one of your statements was that they said that you were taking too much time with the city, and I just wondered who they was.
I never said that.
Okay. Mayor, I'm going to ask you something. And this is a conversation I have with somebody else that you, numerous occasions, expressed dismay at Mr. Joseph's consistent delay of different issues. So if that is the case, I'm wondering why you bring him back.
Well, Mr. Hovle, as any employee, you're not going to agree with everything that they do. But I'm here to say that the job that Mr. Joseph did while he was here, he did an excellent job. We have, true enough, he did have discipline. At the end of the day, it's like anything else you work through. And Mr. Joseph and I worked through all issues. And I hired other employees since I've been here. And it's issues. And just like anybody else, they deserve a second chance.
Mayor, the whole, you know, the question I had, Lance, my worry is where we advertised, you know, for the position. I mean, there's so many. Did we use the online job? Like, indie dot com that comes to mind. I mean, with, you know, specifics and someone with, you know, utility experience. Because, I mean, that's a big part of the job in Dales is, you know, wastewater, water and gas, roads and drainage. I mean, did, you know, did we? Because as far as I know, Mr. Joseph doesn't have any background in, like, public utilities. And that's, you know, and if we did not receive any applicants or any candidate applicants with a public utility background, why, it seems we could have, you know, gone out and broadened our, I guess, our cast. And I'm asking, did we or did we not?
Yes, sir. We did apply at different areas, location. Mr. John is not here. The one that called soon, if I recall correctly. The advocate, the Westside Journal. The furthest applicant I got was from Texas. So it wasn't on the website. I got the applicants. I had five applicants that, applications I received on the deadline, and since then, I have two others. That was after the deadline.
It's just, you know, it's just a concern of mine that, I mean, it sounds like a broken record, but, you know, experience in public utilities, which, again, that's a huge part with this job in Dales.
And I don't understand it, Mr. Prevee, but also I have to state that I love these positions just like the mayor's position. I was a police officer. Nothing is I can't do. But as you get into the position, you learn. And that's something that we hope that Mr. Joseph will have on his, getting and starting on. The other thing is, he's been with the city three years. He knows, and he worked with Mr. John when he was here. So that was a benefit that also, we can follow that. And in addition to his experience.
Did he even have a background in utility or whatever the question was when he started? I don't know.
Most jobs you got to learn as you go. And I don't think it would take Lance very long to apprehend whatever he's doing. He's that kind of person that he's going to continue to press on until he gets his understanding of his job. That's the Lance I know.
I got to jump us out there.
I appreciate that. And if I can address that concern, all I can say is, is that it's my understanding that there are multitude of different departments and responsibilities that this position entails. I'm a fast learner. However, if you're asking me whether or not I am competent to perform the job of sewer treatment operator, then no, I'm not going to have that. But I don't think that's my, part of my responsibilities in this position. I think in this position, it's an administrative position. It's working alongside the mayor to make sure that other people fulfill their responsibilities. So as long as you have good people doing the job that they're supposed to do, I think I am more than capable of learning what they're supposed to be doing and making sure they're doing it. Now, as far as myself performing those services, I don't think that's being asked of me. So I believe that that would suffice in the position that I'm being nominated for, to understand what they have to do, not necessarily be able to do. So with that, I submit that I am capable of doing this position. I mean, I graduated last night in my class. And I took the ball, passed the ball first time. I think I have the capacity to learn a lot of information and process that information and utilize it. So I do believe that in and of itself gives me the qualifications and the capabilities to perform the duties outlined in the position.
I had a supervisor tell me one time with the city when I was discussing something with him. He said, you know, well, y'all are our boss. And I told him, I said, no, I'm not your boss. This is a team effort. If you need me to pick up the shovel and dig the ditch with you, I'll do it. People that manage are only as good as the staff they have under them. And they have to be willing to put on the, get down and dirty. Okay. That's the way I look at it. I've been a manager before. If I didn't have somebody show up, it was on my back. And I did. That's what needs to be done. I know it was done before. It needs to be done now.
I understand that, and I don't disagree with that. I'm not at all sitting here saying that I'm not willing to do whatever it takes to get the, get the job done. What I'm saying is, is that I don't believe that the position was advertised as A versus B. Now, no one's going to come in new to a position that they've never performed before. Now, no one's gonna come in new to a position that they've never performed before and know exactly what's going on to do that particular job unless it's something that's relatively minor. However, my point in formulating my response to that inquiry was simply to say that I believe I have the capacity to do the job that I'm being asked to do. Whatever it takes. And that was my only intention in terms of the way that I that 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 answer was formed or formulated.
So, would you be willing to shadow Mr. Brown if we asked you to come look at something?
When the man and I discussed this position, I indicated to him that that was one of my main priorities relative to what may have been done before versus if I'm appointed. And that is to be more involved in the field with the people that fall under my responsibility. Um, I would, I I don't think you can properly supervise, as Mr. Hubbell mentioned, unless you have some inclination of what someone is supposed to be doing. So, I intend to follow and learn as much as I can about every position. So that whatever needs to be done or whatever comes up can be appropriately addressed. So that your constituent service does not skip a beat.
Any other question? No, I don't think anyone can get by else.
Good evening. My name is Doug Smith. Very termite bullbar. It's a pleasure to be back before this council here tonight. For those of you who may not know, I'm a 2013 graduate of Ellis U Law School. Have a degree in political science, a government-related field. Represent numerous public entities and agencies throughout the state of Louisiana. Personnel matters, internal investigations, car accidents. I'm not qualified to be the chief administrative officer of the city of Port Allen. It's that simple. Me, Mr. Joseph, we don't have any upper level management experience nor training. We discussed a lot of things here tonight. His background, none of those things comply with this job as advertised. We don't have to go through each one, but it says must possess out of minimum. He doesn't, he doesn't possess a majority of things listed here. And I believe we touched on this and it's because we just don't have a adequate hiring process. This is a quality job in this parish. We shouldn't be dealing with people who've never performed it before, that need on-the-job training. This is a lot of our money. Training is something you get at your expense at school, not at the expense of the taxpayers. We don't have time for training reels or to pay for somebody else's education. We should be able to field an experienced candidate for this job because this job is the most important job in the city. And as the mayor said, Adrian leaves big shoes to fill. And I'm not here to cast aspirations on Mr. Joseph or his career as an attorney. I just simply, he doesn't possess what it takes as outlined by our own job description and as demonstrated by Mr. Jean during his career. So, I just ask, you know, how did we get here? How did we get to a point where we only fielded five candidates for such a, you know, this is a good-paying job for the West Baton Rouge Parish, has great benefits? How do we advertise for these positions? What role does the human resource director, I know she's leaving, but what role did she play in this process? What role did the personnel committee play in this process? And what was the conclusion that the personnel committee ultimately came to and why? Thank you. I just ask that, uh, you know, we pass on this issue until we can field, you know, a broader pool of better candidates? Like I said, it's nothing against Mr. Joseph. I just don't believe his past experience as an attorney makes him qualified for what the demands of this, uh, position entails. Thank you.
Doug, to answer your question, obviously, uh, you made a number in on the interviews. As far as the HR, uh, it was my understanding that's the first time HR's been present on beyond interviews in the city. Uh, and that that was at my request and, uh, but obviously, and, uh, I want to say that.
And, uh, is with Mr. Joseph, the candidate selected by the committee?
Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean.
Was it, uh, the, was Mr. Joseph the candidate out of the five that was picked by the personnel committee?
That recommended by me?
Yes, no. And, uh, who was?
Uh, one of the other applicants.
And, uh, I know the mayor not bound by their decision, but there was a, any particular reason why you don't follow the recommendation of the committee?
Well, if you look at the results, uh, Ms. Haybear did choose, uh, Mr. Joseph, and I did choose Mr. Joseph. And so wanted to personally to pick for this, this job.
And why did, why didn't Sayberg feel like it was necessary to come in, uh, present this new hire tonight?
Well, she wasn't asked and then she's retired.
Just, just so I'm clear, cause I don't want us to get confused in terminology when we say there was a committee. Okay, it wasn't a, a committee that meets and votes on a one recommendation. The mayor, understanding that the mayor was there, Mr. Hubbell was there as a representative of the personnel committee, and Ms. Haybear would have been at there as HR. But this was not a committee that the city of Port Allen formed and said, we're forming this committee. Now go and do interviews. So, I just wanted to be clear because we're saying committee, but it it wasn't necessarily a committee. It was three individuals who were sitting in on the interviews.
That's clear. And none of the four other applicants had the qualifications for this job as advertised by the city?
All of them had qualifications. All of them had, had the qualifications of the applicant.
So, did any of them have more qualifications than Mr. Joseph?
Uh, as we explained, as I explained to you, uh, the one that was chosen was the one that had the most qualifications.
All right. So, if we, uh, if we go through the process and we end up with five candidates who don't have what it takes as outlined by our ad for the job, we just decide we'll take anybody we can get and we can spend the people's money teaching them how to do this job?
No.
So, you have to think we probably best interest to the public that we go back to the well and try to advertise better, get a headliner, reach out to HR professionals and get somebody that has sufficient upper-level management experience to run the show here in town. Think like I said, you know, in my opinion, Adrian made the wheels go around in this town. And we need somebody that has those qualifications to fill his shoes, not somebody who hopefully maybe, you know, we don't have a HR director, but you know, this guy's gonna come in. We don't have anybody who is onboarding, but you know, he's gonna try his best, we think, we hope. I hope you would. It's a lot of my money.
The reason I made the recommendation I did is because, uh, knowing the history of the city, you have two long-time employees here, which to me are models. And that's Barry Brewer and Clay Saradine. They had a long tenure here, Azra had a long tenure here. And I felt that the one I chose would mold into that position. Now, I'm gonna say this in everybody's defense. There is nobody, even Mr. Joseph, whether he has the experience in water and gas and all that. To me, that's a sign of one. Okay? Everybody can learn. But none of them have that experience. I based it on a person. One that I feel, felt would have skin in the game and pull down. And that would give us longevity. Now, how can I be guaranteed that longevity? I can't, because nobody can. Nobody knows how long anybody's gonna stay in the job. Okay? It's a guesswork. But that's what I felt comfortable, personally favorable. That's what I felt comfortable with. That's why I made the recommendation I did.
I'm not, you know, gonna repeat myself. I just, like I said, this is a very significant position with a good salary, great benefits. And I believe that we should be able to field somebody that has the requisite experience. And we don't need to sell for somebody that doesn't. So, like I said, I'm not here to cast aspirations of Lance. I just don't believe his qualifications and experience relate to this job position. I just respectfully ask that we look for somebody else. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Edwin Shorty. Um, I'm a 2002 graduate of Southern Law School. His classmate. I'm also a member of the Board of Supervisors at Southern University appointed by Governor Edwards. I'm also an elected official in the city of New Orleans. I'm a constable for the West Bank of New Orleans. I represent the entire West Bank of Orleans Parish. I had come up to Baton Rouge today for a meeting at the legislature. And when I called my old friend and said, hey, you got some time to chit-chat, uh, since I'll be in Baton Rouge? He said, no, I've got a, I've got a meeting with the, uh, council of Port Allen. And he told me what it's about. I said, well, come, come check it out and see if I can offer some support. And what I can tell you about this man, my, my friend, since we started law school together in 1999, is that, one, he's one of the brightest people I know. It, it comes across in his manner of speaking, but he is genuinely one of the brightest people I know. He was top five percent of our class. I am saying that as somebody who was not top five percent, way down that list. Uh, but I studied with him and he's much smarter than me. I also say that my friend is a God-carrying man and a family man, but he loves this city. One of my fondest memories is when I first came to Baton Rouge and, and got my apartment and he brought me for a ride to, to show me his hometown. And he took me, I had really seen sugarcane. I'm a New Orleans boy. We know our sugarcane. So, he took me to see some sugarcane and we chopped somebody's sugarcane down so I could try some sugarcane. And he took me in a field to some house where they had the best catfish. I, I, it was like a sugarcane farm and there was a house. And he said, this is, this is just the greatest and the all-be-all. And he loves this place. He loves the people. He's told me about the people in this city since we've been friends. And he brought me here to show me this place and, and profess his love for it. And I talked to him often when he worked as city attorney. And we talked about the issues and we back ideas back and forth. And what happens with attorneys, um, is that often we end up being experts on a few little things because you end up arguing issues and you've got to learn the subject matter, kind of addressing what you spoke about earlier. At one point, I served as a clerk for one of the district judges down in New Orleans. And we had a complicated bond issue. Um, and I didn't understand bonds at all. But to, to relay the information to the judge and to allow the judge the ability to rule on it, I had to basically become a bond attorney. So, I say that to say that Lance knows what he knows and he knows what he's done now. And he knows that when he doesn't know it, he's gotta get people around him who understand the subject. And then you've gotta get in there and understand the nature of what you're doing so that you understand everybody's job and that you can see if they're doing it right, see if they're doing it wrong, and so that you can supervise those people. He didn't know tax when he worked at the Louisiana Department of Revenue. I know he didn't know tax, but we didn't take tax classes. We started the tax clinic, which was to assist poor folks in filing their taxes while we were at law school. But we didn't know the revised statutes that dealt with the tax code in the state of Louisiana. He had to learn that with, at the Department of Revenue. And he dug in there and he, he did his best and he came out as a successful tax attorney for the state of Louisiana. I think that this community would be well-served to have my good friend as its chief administrative officer. I would love to have him come 60 miles down and I get my mayor to put him in the administration. Cause we would be well-served. You've got a bright son of Port Allen there. He is willing to serve. He's gonna give us all to you. And I know he's gonna give it all to you because when he served as city attorney, he beat me over the head about, look, we got this issue. What do you think about this? What do we, how do we help the city? And that he lived, breathed, and slept it every day when he served you. He's gonna do you proud. I just wanted to say something on behalf of my friend. Thank you.
Marilyn, any job, new job that you go on, you have to learn. Even in the classroom, I spent thirty-some years in, in a classroom. And with each thing that I taught, it was science, basically. I had to go and learn and read and study what the procedures were. You don't just step in any job and you're number one. I don't think that actually exists. And maybe it does, or maybe you're wrong. But I think Lance would do well.
I'll wait and see if they have any other.
I'll play.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, uh, just to figure out on what Mr. Ray said, I think he helped well. Uh, we were presented well. We never got all in trouble. We're still free at this one. No, uh, no backlash, no jail time, anything like that. Uh, so I'd like to make the motion to consider the action related to the mayor hiring Lance Joseph as the new chief administrative officer.
And that action was that you, that's accepted or not?
Yes, sir. The mayor's recommendation.
I approve the mayor's recommendation for hiring Lance Joseph as the new chief administrative officer.
I got a motion by Councilman Brown. Taking that, Councilman, please, any objections? You hear nothing?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Hubbell?
Oh.
Ms. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Revere?
No.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I didn't know either. Consider Chief Brown's recommendation to hire four full-time officers. One, Officer Justin McFarlane. Step grade 112A. And, uh, that one, uh, that one, that's Clint Walker, step grade 112A. Third, Reeve Smith, step grade 112A, and Chastity Johnette, step grade 112A.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, too.
Well, ma'am, we did have a, a little hiccup on Reeve Smith and Chastity Johnette. They had said I could use a prior, uh, matrix test and then they come back saying they, I couldn't. So, I had to send them to take it. So, uh, we won't get the results until Friday. So, if we could, those two, Reeve Smith and Chastity Johnette, hire them on proof of they passed the matrix test. But the, all these guys, uh, they already post-certified. They got years of experience. Uh, we did a background check on them. Uh, they seem to be real good officers. So, they don't have to get no trainings for us to go into the academy and stuff like that. But they all gonna get continuous training.
Chief, can you tell us where they worked before?
Uh, y'all know Reeve Smith, he used to work here. He went to Baton Rouge. Yeah, he was a reserve here, waited four times, then he went to Baton Rouge. And, uh, he wanted to come back till we gave him another chance to do the right thing. Uh, Clint Walker, he's from, uh, Walker, Louisiana. He got ten years' experience. Uh, Justin McFarlane, he's a reserve guy and, uh, he worked for, uh, Dillon Spring PD. I think he got three years. Tim had had three years with them. And, uh, Chastity Johnette, she worked for Lafayette and she had eleven years' experience. She's also got qualification as been at detective school and went out of qualifications. So, none of these have to go to the academy. They already post-certified and everything.
Correct. He, he worked for Walker PD or?
Oh, Walker PD.
So, Chief, uh, how often also that take them in? So Chief, uh, how, how often does that take a matrix? I thought you got to take it once it was?
It, it, it depends. It got all kind of regulation with it. Like they told me first, I could hire Reeve Smith because he was here. They would use it past a matrix test when we took it in past it. Then they called back city, I've been here too long that I couldn't do it. And, uh, Chastity Johnay, she was going to bring her metrics from another department. And they said, uh, that at first I could do it, then they said I couldn't do it because of the timeframe. So I like do the timeframe, how long they stayed away and et cetera. To me, it's a money thing, but that's the way it works.
Yeah, because Reeve Smith, he worked for Baton Rouge, see, he's shooting. Got taken a break. How long he been in Baton?
He about three years. And they wouldn't let us use our problem that we already got on him.
I'm, uh, saying. Just so we're clear, so the motion is to approve the hiring of Justin McFarland and Clint Walker immediately and approve the hiring of Reeve Smith and Chastity Johnay conditioned upon approval of completion of a successful matrix test.
Yes.
Okay, I got a motion by Councilman here. Second by Councilman Brown. Any objections? You hear nothing?
Uh, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Wayne?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And also we'll be getting, I guess it's late. I want we to start them because I know our arriving gone, so I know it's going to be a little slower process. So I call and get with you, see the date that they could get gone. The first two. Oh, you want to do that next payroll that they find out?
It would be better because we have a new payroll person doing it.
Gotcha.
Than it would be, like, you just had Yost out on Wednesday, like Yost off.
Okay.
The next paper.
All right. That'll work.
Hopefully we'll have the information for the other guys and they'll all start.
Yeah, hopefully by Friday when they COVID nineteen come in messing things up with them.
We, we get with you because there's a lot of paperwork you have to go through, so.
Oh, okay.
I see. Gen nine twelve. Consider authorizing Chief Brown to advertise interview and recommend hiring two officers to field vacancies in this department. Chief?
Yeah, there was the two that left, uh, during the COVID, uh, also DuHorn and also Shaktar. So we have two vacancies and they want to start the process of those two there.
Yeah, actually just have one and Justin. The one's going to be temporary.
Okay.
That's all you have.
All right.
Justin's moved in. And he's can fill the spot, but after temporary.
I don't prefer. So what, what would the motion be called, Chairman?
The motion would be to hire two. I just want to be sure that, that he can hire two. But it's the under, with the understanding that he's hiring one of those, he's going to tell me which one it is and Justin's his slot. Because there's not another slot, not another conscious, other than to put him in Justin's slot.
This is a spot where one of your officers are out on military duty, so you're required to hold that spot. So one of them will be, you know, assuming that the officer, if he comes back, you'd be entitled to his job. So you would have to let the other one know he's, you know, out of the job.
So it's still two. It's just one would fall in that slot.
I'm voting.
Second.
I, I got a motion by Councilman here. Second by Councilman Williams. Any objections? You hear nothing?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Wayne?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Also, I want, uh, if I could, give y'all the update on, uh, y'all been hearing about the vehicle burglars? So I'll give y'all the update on that. I'll start. Kind of doing a little move. We have some significant, uh, uh, deeper intel on what's going on. So I'm going to get, uh, RoboCop over here. He's investigating, uh, Detective Army.
Good evening. Is that right here?
Yes, sir.
All right. Let me show you what you did. Okay, uh, Chief didn't give you too much detail about what all the covers, so I'm going to go through it pretty quick. And, uh, it's up to you guys if we can take some questions on it. Uh, and so much of something I'm going to say, I'm going to ask for the press's discretion, uh, because we want to protect the investigation. But since about the middle of March, we've had about twenty-four reports of attempted or completed vehicle burglaries within the city in Port Island. So, so the investigation, uh, we didn't have a whole lot. So, uh, so since then, we tried to work on it, but, uh, I'll give you a bit of an analogy and it's not for the sake of being long, but we'll make sure we can get an accurate picture. Uh, sometimes people ask about I do kids wherever as an investigator and say, major cases, it's like somebody hands you a, not really hands you, but assigns you a one-thousand-piece jigsaw puzzle and tells you the pieces are spread out around the city and you're on a clock. You've got to go get as many of them as you can as fast as you can. So this guys, we've got guys who got here, uh, they take off, they're coached. They know what they're doing. They go out with face covered, head covered, gloves, long sleeve, which means that they're not leaving DNA, they're not leaving fingerprints. You can't recognize their faces. Right? So not a whole lot of pieces laying around and really work with. So I've kind of been going back through case by case, trying to establish patterns, routines, things like this. Our patrol guys stepped it up, really worked hard, and ended up getting after it. But we found out that these guys, they've got lookouts. Uh, we've intercepted communications even last Friday where they spot officers they're watching, they're telling the guys who are out pulling car door handles wherever the police are, when they pass, which way to go to not get caught. So they pretty much try to be ahead of us in their track and our offices to figure out where they are and what they're doing. If we had two officers on a major call, a domestic disturbance, they pretty much know where our offices are and know where else they can go. Uh, to do whatever. Uh, but obviously without going into too much detail, uh, since then we have identified numerous subjects and we can most definitely uh, say that they are involved, uh, directly. Uh, and this is going to include an adult, several juveniles. And this investigation has also uncovered, um, another adult who's been involved in selling narcotics to juveniles, even some in this group. Uh, we identified three other individuals involved in acquiring firearms that have been stolen from juveniles. Uh, and like I said, the network keeps growing. So I could say right now that yes, we could possibly arrest one of them yesterday. Uh, but for us right now, we want to see, okay, how big, how much of this network can we expose? And how many of these people can we really get probable cause enough to get a successful prosecution on? Especially if these are the people that are willing to get fourteen, fifteen, sixteen-year-olds, sometimes even thirteen-year-olds out here on the street, going in a few yards, pulling car door handles, stealing firearms, trying to sell this stuff. And even we have some of these juveniles even selling narcotics themselves. And so for us, our goal right now is to contain what we do know, the things that we can identify, and at the same time work to expose the rest of this network and try to put as much of this to sleep as we can, as quickly as we can. So since then, our investigation has solved at least one vehicle burglary that happened outside the city limits in the parish. But it's also confirming some theories about things that happened beforehand. Because we think these guys started outside Port Island City, kind of refining their skills a little bit, for lack of a better term. And then that's middle of March, when they really started to hit Port Island. And they'll come here, go to Baton Rouge maybe, come back, go outside the city. Plaquenaw, we recovered a stolen gun from Plaquenaw off of a couple of juveniles two, three weeks ago. So like I said, progress is being made. Um, and we're just thanking the Port Island City for their patience as we try to make this the most complete and effective investigation that we can. So right now, the sheriff's office has a yesterday, they're on board, trying to change information, try to help close some of their cases. Uh, the ATF is being contacted. They're going to be on board as far as helping us to train, track some of these firearms. Because we're finding evidence of firearms that are in possession of kids that have not been reported stolen. So for whatever reason, maybe they didn't report it, they didn't have the serial number to put with the file, so it goes into NCIC as a stolen gun. But we don't know where the disconnect is. I've been working to try to bridge that gap and, and get some more information so that we can, uh, try to get as many people's property back as we can and be good as many of these guns off the street, uh, now these guys can, so they don't get themselves hurt or hurt somebody else.
Is there a specific area in the city where these robberies are happening?
Uh, well, we want to correct that. We don't say robberies, right? Because robbery in Louisiana law is somebody goes and takes something from somebody's possession by force. So these are burglaries. This means they're going into a vehicle, a house, a shed, or whatever else, and then taking something out. Uh, and most of these are going to be vehicles. So the whole city has pretty much been affected except for anything south of the intercoastal canal bridge. We haven't had any reports from there. Uh, but pretty much every other quadrant in the city has been affected, some more than others. Probably the least affected really is going to be, uh, excuse me, the southeast.
Well, I lock my car anytime I get out of it, so.
Yeah, and, uh, I can tell you, Marilyn knows every night we're watching you, and we tell people to lock their cars and don't leave anything of value visible. And thankfully, we haven't had a ton of break-ins. We've only had one in the city limits, which I think was, uh, last Thursday. We got that report. So again, we're trying to people, lock your cars, don't leave anything of value in plain sight. And if at all possible, please don't leave any firearms in your vehicles taken inside. Because that's obviously a hot item. You have any questions?
I told the chief the other day, we, we discussing this, and I said, you know, the atmosphere now with people, because you have a lot of people that aren't working now for the first time in their life and, uh, there's high anxiety with the pandemic and everything, that these, uh, juveniles or whatever, uh, somebody's going to get hurt. You know, and then you're going to have that cry, oh, 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 that's not right. They're going to get hurt. They need to realize that. I'm amazed, and I know you have to have a, a defining point, but I'm amazed that on, I'll use some dates. May thirty-first, if you're seventeen and you turn eighteen on June first, all of a sudden you become an adult and your mind changes. I'm amazed at that. Because they know what they were doing when they were seventeen as well as they know what they were doing at eighteen.
Right. Yeah. Now, I'll give you a sad truth related to that, because you've got a lot of guys who run wild when they're seventeen and under and they know the game and they know once they turn eighteen, things change. So what we've seen some of these guys do is that once they hit eighteen, okay, I'm not doing all the dirty work now. Let me recruit a bunch of juveniles to do the dirty work. And they can be the ones that risk, they can be the ones putting themselves in danger and I just kind of give them a little foot off the top.
Come on, you're up.
Mm-hmm. So like I said, these, these are the individuals we're trying to not only identify, but also get enough evidence so that I can not just convince the judge that there's probable cause, but I can convince the DA's office that you can successfully prosecute this person. So that's, that's what we're working towards right now.
Okay, what you do?
Yep. Any more questions?
Thank you, Mr. Brown. One question.
Get something, man.
Chief. Chief.
Excuse me?
Thirty-nine, thirteen. Consider authorizing Chief Brown to continue paying the school crossing guards their part-time salary during school closure due to the COVID nineteen event. And, uh, this was brought to my attention in reference to our part-time employees that was working during the school, session, but the school's been out, you know, ever since, uh, March first.
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
And they, uh, they go off with action to be compensated at the same as their employees at the school system.
School crossing guard, are they non-month employees or?
No.
They're twelve-month employees?
No, no, no. They're in school time.
Nine months. Nine months.
But they're part-time.
Right.
And the other thing, uh, Congressman, that, you know, as we are aware, we did adjust the hours for all employees, uh, city employees, uh, are working and they're working less hours. So I, I think it would be fair enough to go ahead and make it, uh, cost a lot of hours if they would have been receiving at the time. Because it's not.
How many of them are there? How many crossing guards? One to your school? Four?
And one to four.
I'll make a motion if we do that.
I need you to be specific because they work hourly and they have a range of hours. You have one that, that works with, uh, be a five athlete. Where two share one post, like when one is sick, that he fills a spot. So we don't have money allocated for both people, even though both people sometimes get paid. So I, I don't care what you do. You just need to tell me specifically. This many hours at their rate. Because I don't, I don't want to guess and be wrong.
So Audrey, there's three of them that work the same schedule and then two flip-flop?
Well, they work the s- this.
The same post, depending on?
I can, I have a history that I can go back and look at what they did last year. You know, I can, I can do that. I just need to know some guidance from y'all about it. Because I want to be fair and I want to do what you want. I just want to be sure that I understand what you want. I want you to know that we have three that work the same school spots every time. And we have two others that share a single spot. And this all took place last year in March, too. So I could look at what they got paid in last March, April, and May until school let out. And we can use that as a guide, which I have no problem doing. This just takes a little bit more work. I can do that. I just don't want to say, okay, I'm going to give them four thousand dollars. It's got to come from something.
No, I'll go by the history.
So go back to last year.
How, how long have they both been in that situation?
For more than, oh, for a little while, for a year or so, maybe a year and a half. You remember when, when Troy came?
Oh.
I have a, I have a history.
Yeah, because if, if you don't do it like that, I mean, you wind up, one of them probably won't get paid because he actually is a part-time, not a full-time. And what he do, he stuff the teeth for the one that's, is sick or hospital, could have been very ill lately. So he been working most of that, like she said, probably half of it.
About half, yeah.
She been, he been doing something like that. So, but if you just do it the way it's set up, I mean, the part-time guy won't get paid. So that's strictly on how you, y'all want to do it.
So could you do like a two-year look-back period?
I can do a single year for sure. I don't know exactly when Troy came, if it was a second look-back.
Single year would be good.
But a single year, I know, I, I know last year, this time, he was here. We can do it that way?
Yeah.
All right. Hold them in motion.
Second.
Who made the motion?
Ms. Hubble.
Ms. Hubble? And motion by Councilman Hubble. Second by Councilman Williams. Any objections? You hear nothing?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Wayne?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Hundred fourteen, consider the mayor's lead recommendation to hire Morgan Morgan at regular one position in Rosen Dranich as step grade one-on-one E. Uh, Mr. Morgan was a, uh, former employee. He worked with us for over ten years. And he left and, uh, he came back and he worked with us during the summer program in this past, no, the winter program, overtime program that we have this past winter. And he reapply to, uh, for full-time position at the city. And at this time, I'm, I'm offering a lot of that foundation to rehire him for that position. Motion.
Second. Somebody move?
I got a motion by Councilman Brown. Second by Councilman Lawrence. Any objection? You hear nothing?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Lawrence?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Wayne?
Yes.
Motion passes. Gen nine fifteen, consider mayor's lead recommendation to continue paying employees full salary and compensation for work, working revised work schedules during the COVID nineteen event until determined by mayor lead. And, and Council, what this is, is that, uh, uh, we, uh, they're important in working adjusted work schedule to prevent the spread of the virus. And, uh, they're in working reduced hours. And effective, uh, uh, Friday, uh, we're going to revert due to the, uh, the state at home order being lifted. We're going to start, uh, we're gonna revert due to the, uh, the state at home order being lifted, we're gonna start, uh, May back to the full schedule. I want to advise you that City Hall will be closed for at least another week, until we get adjusted to this, uh, uh, new, uh, event, that this, uh, vast event. And, uh, we'll make a determination, uh, hopefully after the, uh, holidays, which I think is, uh, May twenty-sixth, uh, we'll open City Hall with restrictions that will, uh, anyone hitting buildings will have to have a mask and, uh, uh, six feet distance and, uh, provided you check.
So, so council, what this motion would do is essentially ratify the decision that you have been operating under, where your employees have been on staggered work schedules, yet still receiving their comp, their compensation, and then further extend that, that blessing until, until maybe fifteen, when all your, would now end, and your employees basically come back to your, your regular schedule. And one of the biggest reasons we're doing that is just in case there's another federal compensation package that comes down, um, there'll be no question about whether, whether that, that these revised work schedules with full compensation was au- was authorized or not. You already have given your blessing on it, so there'd be no question there for an opportunity for reimbursement.
I'm moving. Any motion by Councilman Brown, second by Councilman Williams, any objections? You hear none?
Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Hubble?
Yes.
Florence?
Yes.
Ms. Verber?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Motion passes. Denial of sixteen, proclamation to recognize May seventh, two thousand and twenty, as the National Day of Prayer in your package, council, uh, I'm not gonna give each one of these proclamations, but, uh, on May seventh, as a Thursday, as Thursday, uh, also video, double video, and church, uh, put on a program in recognition of National Day of Prayer, the West End Community Center, which was, uh, streamlined, and it was awesome program, I did, I did review. But, uh, you know, we get a time, uh, there was a proclamation that the city presented, uh, to Ms. Bill for, for her again. Then, hundred and seventeen, there's a proclamation to recognize the Louisiana Community Development Block Program, Community Development Week, April thirteenth to April eighteenth, twenty twenty. And that was last month, due to the fact that we did not have a council meeting, I just put this on this agenda to be noted, that's why we did. But this proclamation is in your package, when you have time to read. So, the general eighteen, proclamation to recognize the fifty-second anniversary of the National Fair Housing Law, Fair Housing Month, April of twenty twenty. And once again, that was another proclamation, that was, uh, this he did in the month of April. And I want to be recognized that he did do a proclamation, uh, to the fair housing. And then out of nineteen, considering Ryan Gorton's classification changed from temporary substitute to supervisor ultimately based on treatment plan, that's, that's to completing his supervisory training, um... As I know, uh, uh, the company did, uh, larger standards for supervisor at the base of treatment plan from a class four to a class three, which, uh, uh, Mr. Gorton, uh, holds at this particular time. Uh, Mr. Gorton did complete a supervisory class, uh, and received a certificate for his attendance, and at this particular time, I would like to recognize him as to be a full-time supervisor for other ways of working facility.
So, before I make a motion, Ron, I wanna thank you, all you do, your crew. Uh, don't have a very nice way of putting this, but you folks really deal with the bottom of the barrel. And having said that, during the times we're in right now, you're one of those that are on the front line. Thank you. And we appreciate that, you've done an outstanding job. Uh, that being said, I'd like to make the motion to change the court's direction. Listen, I'll be outside talking myself.
I got a motion by Councilman Hubble, second by Councilman Williams, any objections? You hear none?
Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Florence?
Yes.
Ms. Verber?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Thank you very much, congratulations.
Thank you, Ron.
Denial of twenty, considering stating the Declaration of Emergency, previously adopted on March twenty-third, twenty twenty, that expires on April twenty-second, until May fifteen, twenty twenty. And this is a declaration, so that the city can be covered, uh, during this, uh, COVID event, uh, for, uh, future, uh, confines from, they... I'm moving. Second, I got a motion by Councilman Brown, second by Councilman Hubble. Any objections? You hear none?
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Florence?
Yes.
Ms. Verber?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Motion carries. Denial of twenty-one, connotation for city?
Well, that's a summary.
Denial of twenty-two, alcohol overdose permit? You hear none? Denial of twenty-three, announcements across the country, I have a few. Uh, this one, uh, tomorrow, the West End Community Center, they have a testing site for COVID-19 virus. That's gonna start at eight AM, that's gonna be a drive-up at the West End Community Center. And is anyone over the age of eighteen?
What time did you say, May?
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock.
Is there a normal say, come? Uh, they started off a fifty test, but then I heard it's gonna be a hundred, so...
The first hundred, you mean?
Yes, sir. Secondly, uh, the city employees will return to work at regular schedule shifts. Uh, Monday, May the eighteenth, City Hall Drive Two will remain open, and, uh, entrance to City Hall will not open until Tuesday, May twenty-sixth. Third, uh, we already discussed the chief, uh, there's ongoing concern about the vehicle burglaries in our community, and, uh, we'll put this agenda on the next committee, uh, meeting, in, uh, in June.
Before we close up, has there been any more discussion with you and, and your staff about, remember, we, you had talked about some of the local businesses complaining about how we categorize the small, medium, large business? Has it, has it been based to the new water ring?
Uh, yes, I, I, I'm still getting complaints.
Yeah.
So, uh, that will be another, I think, I, that we will discuss on next committee meeting, on the seat. And I turned, I think the, the trend to that, and, and like I explained to some of the, the businesses that are complaining, is that as a new business, you have to... It's hard for the city to justify what that goes, what you in, because you have no average usage. So, uh, after you get in for a certain period of time, the city ships have something in the statute to say what light average is, and what median average is, and what heavy average is, whatever you justify, either moving, moving, moving down.
Right.
So that's another.
Yeah.
But the next, maybe, uh... And finally, I wanna mention that the Quell High School graduation will be May the twenty-third. There is a scheduled parade, uh, of vehicles that's supposed to take place on Westwood, but they haven't got it back with me. And I would dig that there you go. Uh, once I get the information, I will, uh, email you, you can have a look at it. Anybody else have any comments?
What's the bank, please, sir?
Uh, rate twenty-three. I want... If there's no other comments, uh, probably denial of twenty-four, John. Motion by Councilman Brown, second by Councilman Williams, any objections?